Well, it is 5:01, so we will call the meeting of the Deerfield School Committee to order for Tuesday, May 11th. And you should note that this meeting is being recorded. Now that I've gotten, Darius has gotten it going. But this is a virtual meeting and it is being recorded for posterity. So the first order of business after the call to order is to welcome Erica Jacob. And congratulations on your election to the Deerfield School Committee.
Thank you very much.
Very pleased to have you join us and I hope you enjoy it as much as all of us do. Sorry. Next item on the agenda would be a presentation by the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee for Union 38 Frontier Regional Schools. So I will turn it over at this point in time to, it is Asia, right?
Asia.
Asia, Serone and Holly Johnson, who are both on with us.
All right.
It's all yours.
Thank you guys for having us tonight. As Ken said, my name is Asia Serone and I co-chair the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. The law requires us to evaluate the special education system and advise the district on the safety and education of students with disabilities. Our organization has been an official CPAC for just over a year now, so this is our first ever annual report. This year has been a difficult year for everyone. We want to thank all the teachers, related service providers, instructional assistants, and administrators for going above and beyond for the students in this district. The flexibility and dedication they showed this year has been amazing and we are so appreciative of everything that everyone has done. This district did an exceptionally great job at providing in-person learning. And while IEP students benefit from this, they're still going to take longer to catch up due to their disabilities. So we hope that this will stay in the forefront during programming and budgeting decisions for years to come. We aren't sure exactly how long it will take, but knowing that it already takes kids a while to catch up from even a summer, losing a lot of time this past year is going to take multiple years before we're seeing all that recouped. With the support from the Special Education Department, we were able to hold our monthly meetings and workshops remotely via Zoom. We held informational webinars and provided caregivers opportunities to support each other and to network. We met with a variety of administrators to discuss COVID planning, elementary technology, elementary PD. We did IEPs and 504s at Frontier and we did a lot of work with disability inclusion. Administrators, principals, staff, and school committee members have all attended our CPAC meetings throughout the year. While there are many wonderful things happening in this district, we are tasked with the responsibility to evaluate the special education programming. We went over the district's policies, procedures, state data, and got input from families. Through this process, we have found concerns with special education compliance, documentation, communication, and training to varying degrees throughout the district. We found that special education-related policies and procedures were adequate. The special education procedures manual was very difficult to find on the website, though, so we would encourage changing that, making it a little more visible would be great. If families, staff, or community members feel that the school is not meeting legal requirements, they can file a complaint with DESI using the Problem Resolution System. PRS investigates claims and determines whether a school is in compliance or noncompliance of the law. Due to a mix-up and then a delay at PRS, we were unable to get the official data summarizing the total number of complaints from each school this year. So we had to rely on unofficial data from CPAC families and we had no reports of PRS complaints from Deerfield CPAC families that we spoke to. And perhaps there were other families that we didn't come into contact with, but of the ones that we were able to talk with, there was no concerns there. Families can also go to the Bureau of Special Education Appeals about concerns. The BSEA conducts due process hearings and renders rulings and decisions. While the BSEA doesn't keep data for specific schools within a district, as a whole, they received 11 notifications of rejected IEPs from our district in the past year. Concerns that were brought up numerous times were included in this report. So I'm going to start with the district-wide concerns that families had and some of our recommendations, and then we'll get into more specifics about Deerfield later in the presentation. So overall, families love the special education teachers, IAs, and related service providers. They're all doing an amazing job. They foster personal relationships and really build a sense of community, which is a major strength for this district. However, families are concerned that staff are being overloaded with IEP paperwork, meetings, lengthy assessments, and filling in for other staff. They also have to do their teaching jobs on top of all of that. Families are worried that their beloved teachers are going to burn out and that there's also going to be some legal problems with missed services as a result of all this overload. Most local school districts, including Frontier, have a special education team leader that does the IEP paperwork, schedules meetings, and helps perform evaluations, but our elementary schools do not. This puts a great deal of additional responsibility on our principals and special education teachers. So we would recommend that the district looks into hiring a special education team leader at the elementary level. This new position will make our schools more attractive to highly qualified applicants and decrease the burnout risk for our current special education teachers. There are concerns with central offices, documentation, and adherence to legal timelines. The state and federal laws make it very clear what documentation is required and when it needs to be provided to caregivers, but we've had numerous violations of these laws from all the different schools, and the frequency does vary by school, so we want to make that a point. This might sound like a minor paperwork issue, but these delays lead to months of missed services. IEPs are provided on a three-year cycle. The first year is a comprehensive evaluation and the school district has 45 school days to get the family the IEP. The following two years are updates without an evaluation, and the school has 10 school days from the annual meeting to get the family the IEP. New services do not start until the family has received the IEP and signed it. CPAC parents across the district are reporting that it takes twice the typical timeframe for each of these situations. If a 45-school-day evaluation takes 90 days and the 10-school-day period each of the two following years takes 20 days each, that child has now gone an extra 85 school days, which is approximately four months over a three-year period, without the updated support that they need. If a student is on an IEP their entire life, they would have five of these triennial IEP cycles, which would be 20 months or two school years of missed services due to paperwork delays, when they're already behind all their peers due to their disability. We recommend that IEP meetings and paperwork get standardized and streamlined to ensure that the district is in legal compliance. In our district, IEPs are often written in vague terms, which makes it difficult for staff to follow the document. Unlike the general education students whose curriculum standards are determined by DESI, the IEP guides the curriculum standards for many students with disabilities. Having vague wording makes it difficult for teachers to know what should be taught and how to measure progress, which can lead to a subpar education. We feel it's important for all special education teachers, related service providers, to get PD on IEP development, the timelines, and to be brought up to speed on the district's special education procedures manual, because we found that some were unaware that that even existed and they work for the district. Our special education department was not reporting rejected, partially rejected, or unsigned IEPs to the state until midway through this school year. When schools report these to the state, the family gets information on their rights and possible next steps. When they're not reported to the state, families do not receive this information and cannot make informed decisions about their child's education. Due to COVID, many IEP students were in remote only or sub-separate classrooms or just unable to stay in the classroom for the entire day. So we recommend professional development and training on managing behavioral issues for all staff, general education, special education, related service providers, and instructional assistants, and that schools develop individual action plans to support high-need students as we return to normal. The CPAC also recommends that the district-wide anti-racism initiative continues to expand to include a variety of minority populations, including students with disabilities. And now on to the Deerfield-specific information. So DES has 90 IEP students, which is approximately 29% of the student body. There are seven special education teachers, giving them a 13-to-1 IEP students-to-special ed teacher ratio. This was, the ratio is about in line with the district, but the percentage of the student body is higher than most. It was the second highest in the district. Families at DES specifically reported that their special education services were not always fully provided. As stated in our main report, we strongly recommend that the district hires a special education team leaders to take on the administrative duties so that the teachers can focus on teaching. We are also concerned with reports from families of repeated physical escorts, restraints, and exclusionary timeouts at Deerfield over the past three years. This was the only portion of our report that we looked back three years instead of one, because some families were in remote-only situations or out of the classroom more often this year and at the end of last year. But they're still worried that upon returning to normal, that this is going to be an issue again. So to avoid that possibility, we recommend professional development on the district's school restraint prevention and behavior supports procedures for all special ed, general ed, related service providers, and instructional assistants. And this will be helpful for kids who may not even be identified as an IEP, but just due to COVID and all the stressors, they might be having a harder time. So I think it's just good practice all around. There's a district policy on physical restraints, but there's no mention of physical escorts or exclusionary timeouts in that policy, so we would recommend that that get updated to include those. And the district procedure on physical restraints, the language isn't always consistent. So in some portions, it just says restraint, and in some says restraint, escort, or exclusionary timeout, and we would just recommend that you put all three just for clarity, so that it's just clear-cut for families, for teachers, everyone knows that we report certain things at certain times. We also recommend adding language about specific timeframes to improve clarity and accountability of that procedure. So for example, it says that you're going to notify parents, but when are you going to notify parents? Like really explaining when that's going to happen, so everybody's on the same page. And they're, just like the other procedure manual, this one had poor visibility. It was hard to find on the district website. So we would recommend that the district just sends out a digital copy to parents and staff on a yearly basis, so that it's easy to find if the situation ever arises for them. Are there any questions? I know that was a ton of information.
I just had a comment that I was very, you know, impressed with the report, and as I read through it, there's certainly a great deal of information for our administration and faculty and staff to absorb and think about and try and integrate all the suggestions that have been made. That's certainly, and I'm sure there will be priorities assigned to many of the things that you've pointed out, but it's certainly, I think, incredible first-year effort. I don't know how much time you folks put in on that, on the committee, but it's a lot of work and a lot of information in the report. So I can't speak for the administration, but just from my perspective, as a school committee member, it certainly provided me with a lot of information to think about and have conversations with them. So I don't know if Darius or Karen have anything to say or any of the other committee members.
No, I'm just going to agree with you, Ken. I thank the CPAC for the efforts they've put in and their ongoing communication. And we received the report yesterday and looking over it, there's recommendations like you just said, we give priority to some of them and be able to report back. And having read through it and listening to Asia speak about it and share it with us tonight, if you have any questions going forward or anything that you would like me to speak to in other school committee meetings, happy to address those questions and continue the conversation.
Sure.
Thank you.
But certainly, I should add thanks to Asia and Holly for the amount of work and effort that you've put in, and the communication this year has been outstanding. I mean, monthly, monthly public comments and good communication with, I think, administration and school committees and the general population. So thank you so much for your efforts in this first year. That's quite a mission statement you have, by the way.
Thank you very much. We'll keep chugging along and doing the best we can.
Okay, and thank you for this good summary to start off our evening. So anyone else out there? Okay, well, thank you again, and we're going to move along on our agenda now. I think that we'll give, as Karen mentions, the special education team a chance to digest and take a look at things over into the summer and get in preparations for next year. So thanks again for an incredible first year of work and look forward to hearing more from you. So. So the next item on our agenda would be to review and approve the minutes of April 14th,
Motion to approve?
That's Carrie, okay.
I'll second that.
And David with a second. Did anyone have any comments or edits or note any errors? By the time I get done sending it to Donna, she usually catches most of the typos, so we'll see. Hearing no comments, we will conduct a roll call vote on the minutes of April 14th, 2021. And Ken Cutterback, yes? David Sharp? Carrie Etchels?
Yes.
Mary Raymond?
Yes.
And Erica Jacob?
Yes.
Okay, so 5-0. Your first vote, Erica, thank you. Financial statement and signing of warrants. Shelley, I assume?
Yes, I'm here.
Good evening.
Hi, I sent you all the expense reports today. I'm happy to take questions if you have them. And we are at a point in the year where we look really closely at budget lines to see where we have overages or where we had savings. For example, our transportation, since we renegotiated our contract with school being primarily remote at the beginning of the year and only a certain number of students, and we have savings there. So we look at all of those accounts and see what funds can be reallocated to other sources. So we're currently in the process of doing that with my team and, you know, and Tina and really saying, okay, is everything encumbered or all the POs in the system? This budget is remaining, are you going to spend it? We're trying to wrap up our spending by the end of May so that we have a more realistic number of where the budget stands, which is a little bit earlier, I think, than in prior years, but my hope is that gives us plenty of time to take a deep look at it. I'm also looking at revolving funds and adjusting where necessary. So Deerfield, for the most part, has already made those adjustments. School committee will remember, earlier this year, we moved school lunch wages onto the general fund budget and off of school lunch, and then I think we also did the same for almost all of the early childhood wages. So there shouldn't be a lot of changes in that regard. I will have a more thorough update for you on the revolving accounts for the June meeting. It probably won't be final numbers, because it takes us a little bit of time to work through those details, but I can at least give you really accurate year-to-date information and we'll have a good idea of what those accounts will look like, as well as school choice. So I'm taking a look at those pieces as well. And then I just wanted to give you an update on COVID-related grants. So whether it's state grants or the CARES Act funding from the town, Deerfield has spent, I want to say around $300,000 on COVID-related expenditures to date. We have a little bit of money left that Tina and I have worked out a plan for to spend through the end of this year. And then, as you know, we're going to be receiving that SRR2, which is going to help support next year's budget, and there's still talks of SRR3 funding going to help us out a couple more years, but that officially has not come across my desk yet from DESI, so I don't want to be premature with that. But it's been really helpful that there's been federal and state funding and even town, local funding to help us out with all of the PPE and cleaning equipment and supplies and materials and HVAC and technology. I think Deerfield is probably right now out of the elementary schools in the best shape as far as technology goes. I think we have all new interactive panels in the classrooms. The Chromebooks should be one-to-one at this point. So we were really fortunate this year to have that funding, because this time last year, we had no idea where we would be in a year. So I'm thankful for the spot that we're in. And then the warrant amount, I skipped over that at the beginning. I usually state that first. So you all signed 10 warrants electronically since last meeting totaling $133,143.95. That's all I got.
Wow. That's certainly enough, plenty of things. Just a quick, does it look like we're still in line with the projections that have been going on most of the year in terms of school choice impact and things like that?
Yeah, I was looking at the school choice reports today. We should be good as far as revenue we're receiving. Karen did send the final claim information with the special education increments that were in, and Deerfield was going to be up a little bit, I think, because of that for school choice. The early childhood fund will have, my guess is, less than $20,000 revolving, and then the school lunch, I want to say, is going to have between $30,000 and $50,000. So, you know, I think those are numbers that we talked about earlier this year. And then the general fund budget, we do need to preserve, we had talked about saving $90,000 from this year's budget, reallocating to school choice so that we can support next year's budget. That's what helped bring our number down from the 7% to the 3.75 or 7.9 that we were at for next year. So all of that looks to be on track at this point.
Okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I know that there's a capital planning committee and finance committee joint meeting going on right now as we speak. The budget at the town level is extremely tight, so they're taking a long, hard look at the prioritized list that the capital planning committee had provided. So we'll wait and see what impact that has. I think if there's any impact, it would most likely be at Frontier's level as opposed to Deerfield's. So, but we'll find out. It's a fun budgeting year. Any questions or anything from the assembled multitudes? The next item on the agenda then would be public comment. I was not notified of any public comment, so we can move on in the agenda to the next item, which would be a COVID update. Would that be, Darius?
I guess that's me. I see Jim, Jim Smith, and Julian, neither of you guys want a public comment? I just wanted to make sure anybody, nobody else is on that one, public comment.
Oh.
Sorry, Darius, they're joining me for my principal's report.
Oh, whoopie.
Okay. Well, that's nice.
COVID update, I don't have, you know, that's kind of a standing thing that we have this year. There hasn't been a whole lot of changes in, you know, what we're doing. We're kind of, we're back in the swing of things and, you know, we've been doing pool testing weekly and for the most part, getting negative results. The pool testing from yesterday came back negative. And when we have in cases, we're, you know, we're dealing with them, processing them, and, you know, again, once again, our procedures and such and what's happening in the classrooms and such is working up to date. So outside of that, I don't really have any other COVID and planning for next year. You know, as I said, I think in the past meetings, the, you know, we're looking for a regular opening for next year. And we'll see where we are with vaccinations and that kind of stuff and what the protocols are going to be around masks and any other kind of PPs that'll be needed or procedures in the building. But every month is a little bit different than the month before, so I think we've learned, don't overplan, don't try to outplan COVID. Take the information you have in the month you're working on it. So, yeah, we'll have to figure out what we'll be doing as a school committee if we'll need to have a meeting before school year starts in August. We're usually, we try, you know, there's some months we take off and that kind of stuff. So we'll discuss that in June. But that's my COVID, unless there are any questions regarding COVID or anything COVID-related going on in the schools, I'd be happy to answer. One last final thing, I did get a question from, I think I got it, from Deerfield regarding, are we going to do anything regarding vaccinations for 12 and up? And for sixth graders, that would fall under, some sixth graders, right? And so I'm in the process of talking with our board of health and other health officials in the area, trying to do a vaccination program for 12 and over through the schools for convenience and that kind of thing. You know, talking with other superintendents, we don't always think about it that way, but there's, there's an access issue when you live where we live, to get to a place to get a vaccination and that kind of thing, especially while school is going on and that kind of thing. So AMRS has been able to do something like that in their schools and for 18-year-olds, and now they're going to try to do for whatever, and I'm trying to copy that here so that we can have at least an option for families to get a vaccination while at school. So we're talking about it, however, it's Pfizer only, and right now J&amp;J is the only thing that Deerfield's been getting from the federal government. So, you know, we're working out how can we get those things here, you know? So working on it.
Okay. Thank you, Darius. Anti-racism and Equity Subcommittee update. Would that be Kelsey?
Yes, it would. And I apologize, my camera on my personal laptop is not working and I forgot to grab a Chromebook on my way out, so I apologize for that. So, yeah, it's, we're kind of in that part of the year that's crazy for people and everyone in the building. So we are up at Frontier, we're about to have our first in-person discussion group. So we have been doing those virtual discussion groups since February. So this will be our first in-person one tomorrow, actually, so we're excited to see how that goes, and we're excited to expand that model into the elementary schools next year, hopefully. So the, kind of the last big thing this year, we will be having an all-committee, a full committee meeting before the end of the school year to kind of clarify what the priorities are for next year. So tonight, I actually wanted to ask you all if you had any questions about the work that we've done this year, or if you had any, any feedback or anything that you wanted to make sure was brought to the full committee as we're thinking about priorities and directions for next year.
Great question. From my perspective, I, I think the work that the committee has done this year has been outstanding. And again, we're in the first year, much as the CPAC committee was in their first year, but this is a, you know, a new, a new initiative for our schools, a very important one. And I, you know, personally think that the work has gone pretty well and very well. And, you know, we're getting good, I think you're getting good feedback across the spectrum of the community, and hopefully that will continue and we can continue to build, build on this year's experience, so.
Well, thank you.
Anyone?
I agree that overall, it has been a positive response from the community, and it's definitely been a positive response from students. They've been really eager to engage with this content, which has been really exciting.
It's, it will take time, as we all know, so. But it's a great first step. Anyone else? We need caffeine or something out there tonight. A quiet crowd. No, I want to thank Kelsey for being a regular reporter at our group, at our committee meetings, but I also want to extend our thanks to the whole committee and the whole team that's been working on this. It's been an incredible effort and just good communication to the school committee and good communication to the school community, I think, that needs to continue, and this is vital work. So thank you for your efforts, Kelsey, and please pass along our thanks to the rest of the team, so.
I absolutely will. Thank you for that.
So. So wow, this crowd is tough tonight. New business.
Trevor talked.
What's that? I know Trevor's.
I realized there was a lot of filler. Yeah, I was kidding.
That's true.
We will try to make up for it. I will.
Under, under new business, I um, I'll, I'll start the new business section by apologizing. I should have apologized at the beginning. I had sent out a note to the uh committee members today, thinking that we were doing reorganizing tonight after the uh town elections, but we will be reorganizing at the June meeting. My apologies for jumping the gun on the uh the note to you all, but you can certainly think about positions or things that you'd like to do with the committee and uh we'll have a good reorganization meeting at the start of the uh June meeting. So new business discussion, charging for early release Friday gap care. Tina, is this you?
It's not.
I was gonna say if it is, Darius is pulling a trick on me.
Is this Tina's idea? No.
No, I didn't know.
I have some fun here. So uh basically, uh, you know, what I'll do is I'm going to present my screen. Just as, as my notes on this and might be easier than just looking at me talk. Not that it really needs a, a presentation. So basically, just kind of talking through this. Um, so going back, we're talking about the early, the professional development days that, you know, we approved in the la, in the calendar last month. Um, there's this time period between one thirty and three, which we call the gap care time. Um, and when we rolled out the um when we rolled up with those professional development days and go back, way back to Marty Barrett, as you may, somebody may remember. Um, there was this time, what were we going to do with the students? We were going to provide enrichment activities and that kind of thing. That really didn't take off the way we wanted to. Um, and also the amount of people that signed up for the gap care um just stayed till three o'clock because kids were having fun. There was a lot of recess, that kind of stuff. Um, made that even more difficult. Um, so that's a little bit of the history that kind of came through. And so during this time period right now, we are paying um for people to watch the students between one thirty and three. Um, but we're not charging. And so we would like to next year start off with nominal, not start off, just having one time nominal fee, um proposing a five dollar child, five dollar fee to cover that um one to three o'clock. Um, the fee will be used to, you know, pay for the snacks that we'll be providing um that part of the day. If you're hungry, um it also um keep the child ratios low. And it's less than what I out of school time charges right now. It's um, it says right there. The fee for five dollars for one and a half hours is below the six hours, six dollars an hour that is typically charged by our school programs. Um, scholarships will be for families with financial hardship. We're not trying to push anybody away. You can't afford it. Um, and we'll go through our normal out of school time scholarship um qualification program for that. Um, and if people want to continue for the out of school time at three o'clock on those early release day, the um, the rate of fourteen fifty will apply for the time. So and these are, this is the calendar that was approved last month and where there's early release days. Um, there are twenty in total. Um, right now, students, you can probably help me here. They sign up for some, yeah, they sign up for some and not others. The way it works right now, when they need it or that kind of thing, depending on the time of year, what's going on in family situation. So that's what we're looking to do. So I bring it to you for questions.
But Darius, you said a one-time fee, but it's five dollars per Friday, correct?
Yeah, if I said that, I misspoke. Thank you. It's, it's five dollars per, it's five dollars, it's a five dollars per day for the hour and a half.
Okay.
That, that was going to be my question. So any other questions from people or I?
Mary. Darius, do you have a number of how many, I know it varies uh day to day, month to month, but how many students participate?
Tina?
Last year, we had around a hundred and forty and upwards to a hundred and sixty. And so Darius is correct. Families are able to sign up monthly and some people two certain days and some people don't. But on average, we have anywhere between a hundred and forty and a hundred and sixty.
Wow. That's a good sized group. So. Okay. Well, if there are no other questions, um, this was just prevented, presented as information or would you like a, a vote? Darius.
I would like a vote. If the committee's not ready for a vote, we certainly, you can, I need to know by next year. Yes, you have the month of junior ahead of you still. You have a meeting, but um
Well, let me see.
It's scheduled to vote tonight.
Let me see if I can get a motion to uh prove a.
Can I just ask a quick question, Ken? Sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, just specifically, so where does the money go? Is, is there, is it for the out of school time budget? Directly to that budget? Yeah, okay.
Correct. So they'll offset the costs. You know, we're, we're paying those people now without a charge and we were picking it up, supplementing it from either where we're showing still on, we know exactly where we're supplementing it from. If we're, I don't want, uh, if we're supplementing it from other, from the out of school time budget and the excesses they had. Um, so you know, basically, you know, the rest of the program is paying for this gap care. Rather than us being able to use that money to offer, you know, additional things and and or staffing.
So I mean, if, if my math is correct, we're looking at around seven or eight hundred dollars a day times twenty days is a fair amount of money um that we would generate out of this. Do we have that kind of staff expense? Um, you know, on the order of, if my math is right, it's been a while, but isn't that around sixteen thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars? Just a curiosity question.
You're probably not.
Maybe I'm getting, what's that?
Probably not all going to pay the full five. So I would drop that down to probably a hundred or, I mean, I don't know what the statistic would be, but probably a bit less. It's probably five hundred a day.
Even at that, it's, you know, ten thousand at five hundred a day. So.
Right.
Um, I can't remember last year. I think this was paid from budget, Tina. It was not paid from out of school time.
Our instructional assistants are assigned to cover in classrooms and we needed to use all of our instructional assistants for that gap time, if you will. We were able to free up maybe one or two to join with the professional development.
Right, but that, I mean, as, as you just noted, that it takes the IAs out of the professional development picture, which isn't ideal at times, but I, I don't know how you get, how you work around it.
It's, you know, to be transparent, yes, there is the fact that when you charge, you know, nominal fee, many families will choose not to have free childcare gap care that they may, may not need. Um, that they were leading their students in because it's a free gap care time. And so therefore, you know, we're not, again, you know, five dollars for an hour and a half. Um, you know, you know, for several months out of the year is not, is not going to really push people away, but it does make people pause of whether or not they want their child, whether or not they're going to come at the regular, this time and pick up their kid. And the idea is will, that will help reduce the number twofold. One, it will help us pay for some of the losses that we have there. Two, it will allow us to free up some staffing that we've had to use for that. And so or, you know, originally, this is where something we went back and forth on and I, this is, I know this because, you know, those of you down that were on the committee um eight years ago, I think, when we did this, no, longer than eight years ago. Was it, yeah, about eight years ago. That's not right. Um, is when we kind of came out here and it was really trying to, we really wanted to get that professional model, model in place and try to, and we had a lot of we had nice planning about creating, you know, enrichment activities and we'll do this. And then once we created some of those activities, everybody signed up for them. And all of a sudden, we had capacity issues of trying to make that work. And so that kind of all, and we, meanwhile, we've seen the importance of the I hope we've sold the importance of the um, the PD and having the, the ongoing PD rather than, at that time, there was only two days a year at the elementary school. Um, there were, were separate PD outside of parent conference and such. Uh, it was, it was very, very limited. So we've been able to get a lot done and really move that needle in, in, in supporting the teachers and such. So that's kind of the history there. So I just don't, you know, part of this movement of doing the five dollar fee is that here, they don't just leave the students in, if, you know, they need to sign up um for the aftercare program and, you know, there's financial hardships, we will, we will support them. Um, you know, so that's, that's, you know, looking at that as well.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was just raising the question to ask the question. I wasn't doing it as a, a critique or anything. So um, Erica. I see a hand up there, Erica. Go ahead.
Yes. Sorry, I was pressing the raise hand button instead of the mic mute button. Um, I wasn't kidding anywhere. Um, I just had a, a, a question about um I suppose a little bit of the origin of the early release day uh in, in terms of charging for it when um see if I can formulate this. The early release is uh a time when the kids are being picked up or, or being released, obviously, early. Um, and for I guess, is that, how, how long have we been doing the early release? I guess part of where I'm coming from with the question is about the idea of um, you know, for uh, for parent, for dual working parent families and the fact of the um, you know, having to figure out what to do with their children on an early release day. So whether that's like part of a standard, like is that something that, uh, is that something that happens in most school districts? I know it's a, I know it's for professional development. Um, and, and it's got a lot of use, use in terms of what happens for the uh staff, but I was just wondering in terms of um, the school, the set of, the, the school um day, the length of the school day in terms of how it impacts families and whether that um because in, in some ways, I was wondering if like the goal is entirely to um you know, are, are we there is, there is a little bit of a mention of, of being able to reduce the number of people who use it if they're deciding not to choose it. So I was just sort of wondering like how uh, is it, is it the school's responsibility to have the full day covered for students who are used to having that full day covered? Sorry, it's a kind of convoluted question, but trying to get a lot of angles at once, I think. Um, but if you can parse that out.
Sure. So you, you did hit a lot of different angles. So one, the last where you ended is a philosophy question. What is the role of the school in a childcare component of in, you know, of, for, for families? You know what I mean? You know, do we have an obligation to families to provide childcare a hundred and eighty days out of the school year, you know, um, on full days? That's a philosophy thing. So I'm going to say our job is to educate and provide the best education possible. And in working within the constructs of our, I guess that's what we're kind of saying here, is that we need to create, we can't create time for teachers. We can't create more time. So, you know, we created this model. The model started off with, I think, twenty-five days and we reduced it down to twenty. Um, or we, I think we did it immediately in the first or second year, so it was before I was in this position. Um, and so we did reduce it from there. Um, there are different models in different surrounding districts. Some do like half days. And they do one half day a month or after several months, you know, and doing longer time periods with the teachers. Um, we went with the reduce of the hour and a half on the Friday. Um, why did we pick Friday? We did survey the parents this year and overwhelmingly, they, we were thinking about shipping it to Wednesday administratively, but overwhelmingly, the parents were saying, if you're going to do it, do it on Friday. So that's why we, we stayed with Friday. I think it was like seventy-four percent of parents said they preferred to have it on a Friday. Um, so, yeah, so I mean, there's different ways of doing professional development. Do we have more by the hour than other districts around us? I think we're probably in the, maybe in the upper middle of, of that. I'm kind of guessing now, just talking, thinking of my colleagues and of other superintendents and other districts of what they do, but you're going to see a lot, a lot of districts, neighboring districts have a lot of half days. This is a half day, Wednesday kind of deal. Um, we're, we're thirty or something like that and they get three hours in or two and a half hours in rather than an hour and a half. So.
Yeah, I mean, I think that you're bringing up a good point that families will start to weigh the benefit of having their children in that time period when it becomes a budget issue for the parents as well as for the, you know, the benefits to the school if they get the revenue versus what the parents need to pa, budget into their own to. I mean, it's, it's not, it's, it's, it's a small, at least, you know, it's a cup of coffee or whatever, but not everybody goes to Starbucks every day. You know, so it's uh the balance there. So anyway, yeah, it's something just to consider. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Um, Tina, I think you mentioned uh when, when it's a busy, you know, a hundred and forty, hundred and sixty kids there. Most of the IAs are there watching the kids. Is it, are we saying if this is funded to this five dollars, maybe there's fewer kids, maybe there's more staffing from OSTP? Does that mean the IAs are then taking advantage of PD? And that they otherwise are not able to because they're busy watching the kids?
Yeah, I mean, given how many students sign up, then we would shuffle our resources accordingly and possibly be able to free up um, uh more IAs to participate in that PD. Right now, we do a rotation or last year, I should say, it seems like it was so long ago, we do a rotation to ensure that um every IA was allocated PD time.
Great.
Thank you.
Other questions? So can you, I just need a clarification on sort of what Carrie was asking as well. So the the um people, staff that you would be paying from that one thirty to three are going to be people that would not be working during that time. It would be the out of school people that generally start at three o'clock.
Darius, do you have ideas on this? Because um history is in the IAs.
Some of them are, it's both. And we have a lot of IAs who also work in the after school program as well, right? So, you know, um if we can, now that we have, if we have some more funds, we can also have those who do just out of school time um to come earlier because we have funds now to pay for them. So that would, that would essentially open up additional slots. Will, will we have enough for, depending on the numbers, let's say it reduces, because they reduce by twenty kids or something like that. We're still going to have an issue, you know, we're still going to have a staffing issue where we could bring in some, but we're still going to have to use IAs. It's not going to, we're not promising it's going to limit the use of all A's. It'll free up more in Tina's rotation instead of having four available to be part of professional development. Maybe there's six to eight that are available for professional. So it's, but again, it's not the, it's not the one, there's kind of all the pieces together. It's not the, there's no one reason that this is why we're saying we're doing this. We're saying kind of you know, cumulatively, the, the three different, you know, different areas at um is why we feel there should be a, a charge there.
And then could you just, I mean, I know the importance of professional development certainly, but just give us a little idea of how that time is used um to make, you know, to make a big, big picture type of difference because sometimes people think, well, an hour and a half is nothing. By the time you get started, it's over. So how do you formulate the, the programs for your professional development? Do you take, you know, one project and work on it all year? How does that work?
I'm pulling up. I'm, okay, I had my screen, so I didn't know if my mic was on. Good thing I didn't say anything. Um, I'm going to present, I'm going to present you really quickly when you, you talk about. Basically, this was this year's early release calendar. So people can get an idea of what we're doing between the, the one forty-five and the three fifteen. Um, that's the teacher's time. The kid's time is, is one thirty to three. We're talking about the after school programs, but you can kind of see, you know, this year, obviously, our focus was anti-race and professional development. You can see that ongoing. You talk about grade level meetings and that's where you're talking about grade levels across the district. Um, you know, looking at the health and wellness. So you, you're kind of seeing, if I, if I had, I, I grabbed the first one I could find. We have next year's in draft of what we're going to do. We haven't assigned them dates yet because it also depends on when our outside speakers are coming in and how we're lining that up.
Darius, do you mind if I jump in for a second?
You do.
Um, so Mary, they're broken up into categories. And so we have a district proposed, like district times, and then we have building-based times and we have teacher proposal times. And so then we're able to dig deeper into each of those three categories. And so then we're able to dig deeper into each of those three categories.
Great, thank you. That's helpful.
And that was like the different colors in that thing, right? As well.
So I see Erica with her hand up.
Um, I just, it was sort of a follow up on that, which I think I have a better formulation of where I was trying to go with my question. Thank you, Mary, because you helped and Carrie for your follow up too, because that helped. Um, is this idea of, um, I think with, with, uh, knowing that the, the, this, that, 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 that this, if we, if parents were given, um, were asked to, to pay a charge for it that also benefits, um, this, the students ultimately, because the, um, teachers are able to do uh, more professional development, or there's a shift that allows for more IAs to be able to do professional development. You know, like if it, if it ends up being something, uh, you know, where it can be, uh, presented to the parents where it's like, this is going to help, ultimately help your, your children because it's going to start, it's going to free people. It's going to allow more to happen, um, to benefit, you know, the learning that the professional development, to show how professional development directly. I mean, even though it may intuitively seem like, oh, yeah, of course, that's going to help the teachers teach better or the IAs, you know, work, uh, teach better. Maybe it's, it's, it's one of these things where it's just making the case, um, more strongly so that the, the, the sort of cause and effect, it's like, yes, I'm, I'm helping invest in the school so that my kids are getting a better experience, I guess. This is one way of looking at it. So.
Yeah. It's true.
And you're asking why now? Why are you doing this now, Darius? And probably the other thing, it's kind of, so no matter what, anytime you charge parents, you're gonna, it's not the most popular. Like, wow, great. They finally are gonna charge for that. But you're not gonna get that, I don't think. But it is, you know, so we have a disruptive year. If we have a disruptor, I mean, we didn't have after school program this year. So as we started back up, you know, if we're gonna do any major kind of changes programmatically, now's the time. At least in my, you know, we do transitions like that, it's the time to do it. And so that's why it's being brought up this year now as well. So.
Right.
Wondering the timing of it. We've been talking about it administratively for years and we're kind of like, you know, it's a very, not the most popular thing to do. Um, and when's a good time to start doing it? So kind of, we have a reset of what the after school program looks like. We've got a reset of what families have been doing with their own children and such. So maybe they enjoy their, their kids so much this year remote that they want to pick them up early.
Uh, has there been any consideration for sibling discounts? I mean, $5 is not much for most families, but when you talk about two or three or four kids, it starts to add up. Just wondering if that's been discussed. It's not a deal breaker, but.
You know what? We have not ironed that out. So if you, you know, quite frankly, you are the first committee to have this discussion. You're the first main meeting. Um, so I think we should look at that because I agree completely.
Certainly. Yes.
Thanks.
Good suggestion, Carrie.
We'll do that. Good one, Carrie.
No, not the only one of three students out there.
So maybe we hold off on voting until next month. But I.
And I don't mind, I don't mind if you do. There's no, there's no kind of rush on this because we're not gonna be notifying families till after June anyways. And quite frankly, you can, you know, uh, test the waters and conversations with people and stuff about how people feel about that.
Mm-hmm.
Some, do some ground research.
Sure. I think we put it back on the agenda for next month and, um, maybe there will be a sibling discount structure to it. Who knows? But good suggestion, Carrie. Any, any other thoughts, comments, suggestions before we move on? Okay. So no vote, no vote. Next month. Um, we have, the next item on the agenda under new business would be to review the Director of Business Administration's contract as negotiated. Um, Darius, do we want to move to executive session briefly?
So I would recommend, if I was here, what I would do is if, if you guys are planning to go to executive session to talk about the contract, then I would do all the other business first. You have some guests on here, let them get it out of here.
Right. Oh, that's true. And you're absolutely right. So why don't we move directly to the principals report? And we'll, we'll, we'll go in, in a random order on, uh, reports, but we'll start with the principals report since we've got a couple of people, guest stars here that are, uh, going to help out.
So our first guest star is gonna be Jillian Andrews. So I know she has another, um, appointment to get to and she's gonna be talking about our instructional leadership team. Take it away, Jillian.
Hey, everyone. Erica, welcome. Um, so you know, when it's really quiet, Ken, and you're like, wow, this is a tough crowd. Welcome to our world on a Monday morning. Particularly with 12-year-olds. Monday mornings are tough. It's like, let's go outside. Um, so I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the, what's, what we call is the ILT. Um, I don't know if anybody's heard of what an ILT is and what they do. So I'll give you a brief synopsis. Um, there's a lot of lingo with teachers that school committee members might not be aware of. So, um, an ILT is an instructional leadership team. And we have been, we formed about three years ago. We've been meeting for several years to help. Mostly the, the goal is to help Deerfield improve teaching and learning through increased collaboration and distributive leadership so that it's not just on the administrators to be saying, you know, top down, here's what you do. It's really a distributive sort of, um, um, method of looking at it. So there's been a lot of studies that show schools with strong instructional leadership teams are more effective at assessing the progress of teachers and students and then making adjustments as needed. So really, that's our main goal. Our main goal is to support teachers to focus on learning and growth. So the question is, how does an instructional leadership team measure learning and growth? And, um, how do we as educators understand what our focus should be? So for example, should our focus be on, um, having teachers work on uh, methodology of teaching, like a jigsaw method or teaching them mnemonics? Or do we focus on response to intervention or collective teacher efficacy? So there are really literally thousands of different influences. And, um, the question for the instructional leadership team is how do we rank those influences and effect sizes that relate to student achievement? So luckily, we don't have to come up with that ranking, um, because we probably could never do it. Um, so the, the instructional leadership team is really examining evidence-based techniques, which has been, been verified from evidence to be effective. And the, the evidence that we use is based on meta-studies of what actually works in education. And we've been studying the work from this person named John Hattie. He's very, very, he's high, highly regarded in the world of education across the world. Um, we're basically studying the work from, um, this visible learning, which is the world's largest ever collection of evidence-based research into what actually works. So this year, the instructional leadership team had a, you know, we were, we were sort of on a roll for a few years. And then COVID hit and sort of, um, just put the brakes on for us. I mean, we really had to reassess. Um, it sort of gave us a yellow light rather than that green light. So it's not that we stopped, but it really did, we, we really did need to pause. And, um, had to just think about how we were going to collect, uh, information and where, um, where our stakeholders are in terms of how the community is doing. So based on that, we wanted to take the temperature of how teachers, families, and really most importantly, students um, are faring after this unprecedented year of remote and hybrid learning. So we did these surveys. This was back in, um, February when we handed them out. So they're a little bit dated, but they gave us some important information. And I just wanted to just briefly share some of the, um, the data that we collected, some, just some summaries. And, um, it really just helps us as a school gauge what we're doing effectively and what needs our attention, particularly after this year. So, um, with the teacher survey, it's, it's interesting that we were just talking about that professional development. And Mary, you asked a really good question, like, what does that look like? And one of the things that we found was that educators, um, are really connecting with students and families. Um, educators over the past year have been prioritizing supporting families. That's been a huge shift. Um, in terms of all of the roles and responsibilities that we do, there was this added, um, this added responsibility to check in with, with families in a way that we haven't had to in the past. Um, one of the, one of the things that educators found, which really ties into that professional development, was that, um, many educators felt that what we really want is to have more time connecting with our colleagues in small groups. We've missed that. And along with that, educators showed an interest in receiving additional professional developments and collaboration through what are called PLCs, another lingo, which stands for a professional learning community and coaching. So there was sort of this, this new, um, way of looking at our role as an instructional leadership team moving forward, knowing that, knowing that that's what teachers want. We're really trying to integrate that. And as Tina had said, there were those different categories of professional development, one of which is building based. And so, um, that building based team collaboration is something that we're looking at as an instructional leadership team to see what are those, um, goals? What are our goals to support teachers again, to focus on learning and growth? And to have teachers working together based on what they think they need, which is professional development. Um, some teachers wanted coaching and then these professional learning, um, communities. So then we also did family surveys, which was interesting. Um, most families, the report was really positive. Um, I'd love to say that we received more feedback, but, um, we did receive quite a bit. Um, quite positive. Families felt programming was appropriately rigorous. And don't forget, this was back in February. So, um, this was still while a lot of students were still, still remote. We certainly weren't back five days. Um, 62% of the parents surveyed did identify an academic barrier for their child. Um, we're, we haven't really, the survey did not iron out what those are necessarily and how much of that was a result of, um, being at home and having remote learning. Um, and the other great news was family felt very, families feel very welcome and connected to the Deerfield community and that communication's been meaningful, effective and helpful. Lastly, my favorite was the surveys, um, given to students. And that's actually something that the instructional leadership team has been doing, rather than just collecting data of what we think based on, um, based on anecdotal evidence or based on assessments or tests. We're really trying to have student voices become very visible to us. It's a shift in what we're thinking about, but this was sort of a first step towards really getting, um, surveys from students so that we hear from them directly how we're doing. And students felt generally positive about remote learning on Wednesdays. Don't forget, this was when, um, many students were back in school in, in February at the beginning of the year. Many students, not surprisingly, struggled around technology at home distractions, missing time from their peers. Um, students, this is maybe my favorite piece of data from everything we collected. Students felt that they were learning a lot almost every day. Um, and again, that voice of, of students, what we think of teachers, you know, we can, we can be wrong. So to have that voice of, of students is really key. Um, and students felt very supported in knowing that they could improve their learning. So some, some really meaningful data. Um, we are going to be conducting another follow-up student survey, um, at the end of May. And so we'll report back to you on that also, just to see the difference um, in terms of how students are faring who are back in school. How has that been for them? And then also how students are doing who are remote. Um, and we'll be collecting that data to really give us some information about where we're going to go, um, next year. So lastly, just in terms of the instructional leadership team, we're really also just looking to grow professionally. There are four of us on the team right now. Um, it consists of Meg Shilda, um, Kristen Robinson, Tina Gem and myself. And this summer, we're pretty excited. Unfortunately, it's remote and we can't go to Hawaii or something for it, but we'll do it. There's a virtual 2021 annual visible learning conference um, that we're all pretty excited for. And we're gonna just, we're gonna be doing things like, um, taking courses in how uncommon leadership teams solve common school problems. Um, formative assessment in a brain compatible classroom. I know, but this is what we get excited about. I'm like, this is my summer. I'm psyched. I know, my, my, um, my kids think I'm pretty geekish, but we actually really are excited about it. So we just wanted to share that with you because the ILT has not presented to you really. And we wanted to just let you know what we've been doing and, and where we're going and happy to answer any, any questions.
Well, thank you for that overview. It's, uh, it's great to hear of the work that's going on. I, I was not aware of it. So I appreciate the, the summary. Um, how, how's the team formulated? And I'll get to you in a second, Erica. Tina and Jillian, how, how were the three of you or the four of you? How'd you come together?
Well, quite honestly, we are the last people standing. We, we had a larger team and, um, COVID hit. And so they're the last people standing. But, uh, typically we reach out to, um, get a broader representation of the school and we look for volunteers. So we're hoping to build our team next year. But although we are a small team, as you can tell, we're pretty mighty. We, we just keep chugging along.
No, no, it's, it sounds like a tremendous amount of energy. Erica, you had questions or comments?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say thank you for all of that information, Jillian. Um, and also it can completely relate to the geeking out part. That does sound like a lot of really interesting stuff that you're gonna learn over the summer. Um, I was curious to know, you said that you were, um, wishing that more families had, uh, responded. And I just didn't know if you, if, if it's, if you can share the percentages of like, how many people responded and how many students responded? Was it?
Sure, I have that. Um, there were 52 responses from teachers. And for students, we received 158 responses and we expect we'll receive even more because when we do it again, we will be having Erica Parker, who is our tech person, give a survey during their computer time. So we should have 100% or close to 100%. Um, response, which would be, which will be great. The more we get, obviously, the better. And then families, we had, let's see, um, families, it looks like, not sure here, sorry. It couldn't be. It says 52 responses for families also.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's sample size.
It gives us a sample, exactly. Um, yeah, I think Erica, you raised a good point earlier when you were talking about if parents know, if families know why this professional development is so important. I think that's a really important part. And, and maybe that's something the ILT does is, is really, um, give families an idea of what kind of work we're doing so that they can be invested in it as well.
Sure.
Great, thank you.
So.
Thanks, Jillian.
You're welcome. I have to run. I'm off to another meeting.
Thanks, Jillian.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna let Jen present and then I'm gonna let you read the rest of my principals report. So Jen's, um, gonna present on diversity leadership team.
Uh, hello, everyone. Good to see everyone again. Good to see you, Erica, and thanks for the opportunity. I think, um, it's really nice actually to be able to come in and share all the stuff that we're doing in schools. And, uh, it'd be nice to continue because it's, it's a good way for you all to hear what is happening in our building. So I, I sort of wrote up a report of the diversity leadership team and what we've been doing. So I'll, I'll just read that, uh, what I've written. Um, the diversity leadership team started in 2017. That's when I decided that the Deerfield Elementary School community needed to look more directly at the diversity in our school and talk openly about the voices who were not being heard in Deerfield. So together with Dr. Richardson, we sent out applications to the fourth, fifth and sixth grade students asking them to join our diversity leadership team. That first year, we used our monthly meetings, uh, in the school. That first year, we used our monthly meetings, uh, in the school day to discuss whose stories were missing in our school and in our curriculum and to choose actions to address those gaps. Actions such as at all school meetings, we made presentations about famous black people in history or women who have made changes in the world and had a whole school celebration of Martin Luther King Junior Day, which, um, hadn't happened in the school for several years. We ended that first year with a small group of students who joined the Greenfield Pride Parade. With each subsequent year, we added more to the group and to our activities. Each spring, we've had third grade students apply to join the diversity leadership team. The students already in the DLT have chosen, choose the three to six new members each year. In our monthly meetings, we've have tried to address different oppressed groups with, and teach our students about them. The DLT students created activities that they brought back to classrooms across the building. Students would do things such as read books out loud to pre-K through sixth grade classrooms, addressing race or gender identity, and then lead discussions with the classes. They brought art projects about skin color to younger classes and talked about racial identity, what makes skin different colors and how it feels when people treat each other differently because of their skin color. Students talked about identity development and then we created bulletin boards with identity portraits from every student at DES. There was a school-wide, uh, contest to create a welcoming logo that would show that we are a school that values diversity and inclusion. And the winning sticker was placed on every door throughout the school. We gathered after school as well to talk about topics such as gender identity and bullying and then decorated the school for our, for our pink shirt days. Our group attended, attending the Greenfield Pride Parades grew in number every year. This year, we got off to a slower start, of course, due to COVID, but we've continued this group, um, during after-school clubs, which, uh, has enabled us to have new students join in. We're about to celebrate our fourth annual Pink Shirt Day tomorrow. Um, where conversations about gender identity have become easier and more normalized in our classes. Our school has been engaging in culturally responsive work for many years at DES. This is not a new curriculum that has begun this year, but DES teachers have been doing this work and teaching with a lens towards social justice for a long time. Teachers have been learning more so that they can help support conversations in classrooms. Students are learning more so the conversations can be deeper and lead to greater acceptance and understanding. Even administrators have been learning more along the way about what kinds of, what kind of school we want and how we can support this work. Students on the diversity leadership team are really an inspiration to us all as they bravely step out into the community and go into the classrooms to help advance these conversations in our community for everyone to learn more. I hope that all of this work will go out into the community. Um, thinking about Kelsey's question about what we want for next year. I think by having community, community members, including yourself, learn more, um, we can ask better questions and we can all join in this work and be emboldened like the students, uh, to continue our own growing and learning. The pathways that were sent out about a month ago is one way to, for you to engage in this learning. We would love to have you join our school when events are happening and you're allowed to come back into the classroom when the diversity leadership team holds these events to come in and see what we're doing and of course, asking any questions about the work as we share. So thank you for your time and I would love to answer any questions you have about the diversity leadership team.
Thank you, Jennifer. Can, can I ask one favor? Could you send that statement?
Sure.
To myself or to Donna or one of the other, just so it can be included in the minutes?
Yes.
It's a very nice statement. Um, a tremendous effort.
Jennifer, I just wanna say thank you for that report and thank you for the work in doing this. I'm really grateful as a parent and school committee member to, uh, be, have a school where the students and teachers are doing this work and good, it's gonna, it makes a difference. And there's, uh, a lot of schools in this country where this work is not happening. So glad we have, have one that does. Well, thanks.
Thank you. And you're welcome.
I was just gonna, I was just gonna add to that to say that, um, say, you know, thank you and also, um, what was I just gonna say? Sorry, it's leaving my brain. Um, you, you mentioned the, the leadership team as a smaller group. Is that different from the group that you also do for? How, how do they interact?
So normally, um, in the normal year, there's a smaller group, the leadership team, and we meet on a monthly basis in the school during the school day. And there are the kids that kind of disseminate out into the classrooms and run projects, do read alouds, come up with activities. The after-school club is open to anyone. Um, where we just do more educating about any of these topics. And, you know, they support some of the activities, but they're not necessarily the kids that go into classrooms and do the teaching and talking and, and leading activities. So we'll get back to that next year, I hope. We just couldn't have kids going into other classrooms this year and all of that.
So, yeah.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yes, thanks for the question.
Well, anyone else?
I, I'll just say, I'll just say thank you too. And also I just think it's great. Obviously the, like, the kids are kind of leading the charge here and leading this effort. It's, uh, it must be really fun to also see that, obviously, as a teacher, if it's, as it takes off. Um, but I did have one just question as I was just at the end here. Are you, are you teaching fourth grade?
Yeah.
And, and did you say that this is a fourth grade group?
Um, fourth, it's fourth, fifth and sixth. And in the spring, we, um, invite the third graders to apply and then they sort of get integrated in the last meeting or two.
Got it.
Next year, we'll have to kind of, um, backpedal a little and shore up the group because we've lost a lot. Um, so.
Sorry, I, I missed the fifth and sixth joining. I was thinking how amazing it would be that you've got these fourth graders and how you manage that. Like with the fifth and sixth graders not being involved and being told what to do and taught by fourth graders, but nah, sorry.
No, they're, they're actually really good. Even when fourth graders go into a sixth grade, I usually have a sixth grader with them, but they pair up to go and read or do an activity and they're, they're super respectful of each other and they are, they have great conversations and, you know, the teachers really don't do a lot. They help more with the little ones to help facilitate, but the kids do an amazing job. So.
Yeah, that's great.
Fantastic. Great work, Jennifer. Thank you. Um, you've had a busy year.
Yes. But it's a passion, so I appreciate, um, the kind of school and support to be able to do this work.
Well, we appreciate the work, believe me. Um, a, part of the reason why I started doing this thirty years ago was because I, I believed in Deerfield Elementary as an educational leader in, in Western Massachusetts, if not across the state and things like, uh, you know, the diversity leadership team, the instructional leadership team, these types of initiatives aren't mandated. But what they provide for the town of Deerfield and for the Deerfield Elementary School sit, just speaks volumes, um, in terms of the level and quality of education in our school. So thank you so much. So, Tina, oh, we're gonna read the rest of your report. That's good.
Thanks so much, Jen. Um, yeah, so I sent it late. Sorry about that. And it's just all the fun activities that are coming up. Just one note, we are gonna have a hot air balloon here on Thursday afternoon. If anybody wants to stop by for that, don't ask. We have great parents too.
Well, that should be interesting. So, that'll be fun. Okay, I think that brings us to superintendent's report. Or, or Carrie, anything with the collaborative?
Um, the, uh, report was sent out, uh, probably three or four weeks ago now.
Yeah.
I'd forgotten about it, but yeah, it went out. So that's the report.
That's fine. That's fine. Um, Darius, you have anything?
Um, I'm wrapping up this, uh, this tomorrow, my last, uh, new superintendent induction program. So after three years of that program, I'm finally ready to leave this district. So, no, it is, we're, we.
Be still my heart.
Yeah, we do. So I think that's the only thing that's not on the other stuff that we were dealing with. And Tina, make sure no one lets go on the road without hot air balloon, please.
With me in it.
So. Okay. Well, then I, I think we will move, should we move to executive session? Darius.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to, we're going to move to executive session, uh, to discuss, uh, I don't have the exact language here. Oh, it's in the, uh, minutes, um, for discussion of pursuant to Mass Generalized Chapter Thirty, A, Section Twenty-One A, to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically Director of Business Administration. So we will be going into the meeting and we will be coming out to take a vote. Um, and I don't know if Shelley wants to stick around till we come out or not, but, or.
Right, so, uh, you're basically, I'll be probably invited in with you. Everybody else?
Yes, we would be inviting Darius and.
Um, if you need to invite Shelley in for an executive comment question, you can do that as well, but, um, you, how we do this, Erica, I'll just say it all out to everybody is you're gonna completely leave this meeting and you re-mail the extension to the other meeting, top secret link for an executive session. And then we'll have to come back to this meeting after that. And so meanwhile, on YouTube, it'll just be, just my face on that one. All right.
I will jump off and Darius, you can just text me if they want me to join for anything. Cool.
Okay, that sounds good. Thanks, Shelley.
Thanks, Shelley.
All right, so we are, uh, I need a motion to enter executive session.
So move.
Second.
Carrie. David's second. This is a roll call vote. Well, we're doing all roll call votes anyway, so it doesn't matter. Um, Ken Cutterback, yes. David Sharp?
Yes.
Um, Mary Raymond?
Yes.
Carrie Agles?
Yes.
And Erica Jacob?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to move to executive session. You should have a link to it. Does everybody have one before we sign off? Jennifer, you're gonna sit and wait for us to come back in or?
Probably everyone, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so everyone has the link. We'll all leave, we'll all leave and move on over to executive session.
Hey, David, you haven't left the other meeting.
Yep.
Uh.